Welcome to the Town of Acton informational meeting. I'd like to start by going over the meeting protocol. First, please be aware that this is strictly an informational meeting. I hear that no decisions will be made. In an effort to hear everybody's opinion and their questions, speakers will be limited to two minutes and only one term at the podium. As you all came in, you should have received a survey. Please fill it out and leave it with the town administrator. All responses are anonymous. If you have additional thoughts, you may also send emails to jroux@actonmain.org. Just keep in mind that emails are not confidential. At the conclusion of the meeting, which will last no longer than an hour, we will continue to disperse surveys for the next two weeks and have another informational meeting on Tuesday, September 19th at 6:00 PM. We appreciate your cooperation in helping this meeting run smoothly. Jen, we ran a timer and should be taking notes for any questions you have. Do you have anybody coming up with a question or a comment? Question?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Mr. Nass. I would love to move along with the answers. And I just wanted to make a couple of very brief comments. This recreational use of marijuana, mostly in the surrounding towns, they have already passed an order here. So, Leavenly, Shapley, Loomer, Sanford. Sanford is the big one. Sanford doesn't allow social clubs or retail sales. We're the closest one. Since that means that actually it's intact, but we don't know if that's true until legislation is done. Attention or potential, it needs a full-time police force. That stuff costs us six to seven hundred thousand dollars a year. I hope that you will put this before the voters. Let the voters decide whether they want recreational or retail sales or a social club. You can do it very easily. Citizens can do it by petition. It's messy. Sometimes it doesn't work. So, I'm hoping that you will put before the voters what they have in the surrounding towns. Do we want marijuana, social clubs, and retail sales? Those are the two big things that I'd like you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a direct question?
Yes.
One of the items I've heard on behalf of this measure is that it will help us with our tax system. What was the ability of the town, the US town, to raise the census against?
You can jerk the questions to us and we'll get the answers for you.
I'm curious how the item of this will help us with our taxes.
So, how will it help us?
How will it help us? And is it indeed legal for a town, is this town, to levy a tax against a specific person for a specific purpose? Do you want me to answer it? Please, you don't? No, I do?
No. Right now, we are taking questions and comments. And anyone is welcome to approach the podium. It don't have to be... Certainly, there should be a line by now because there should be lots of questions.
Comments, right? You're looking to find out how the town feels about it.
How do you feel? Is this what you're looking for? Will they get forward or against it?
The survey also will... If you're not feeling confident to come up with a speaker's opinion, that's what the survey is for as well. We certainly would love to hear your opinions.
I did say question.
Questions too.
Have you looked at any other towns? Do you allow this to be a question?
Yes.
I think most towns right now are waiting for the state to come out with their laws. And that's why they're working, you know, to set theirs up too. I don't know if anybody gets...
Actually, yeah. This would ask, had a valid point. Most of this running town put, had actually put some sort of more on the board than it thought it. I think that the board hasn't looked at any of it. You know, when the board first started talking about this, looking at it, they looked at the fact that Town Acton overall voted yes. So, what does that yes mean? You know, did it mean that you wanted to go have a couple of plants in the backyard? Or does that mean you wanted to have a social club down the road? So, the purpose of the informational hearing was to get feedback on what you would want in your town. If you want to have nothing, then there's a chance to, again, vote no in the survey from the mid. That, and all the information that they gathered tonight, is just going to help guide them to the next meeting. If we overwhelmingly hear that you don't want, in some of the points that Mr. Nass made about the social clubs and the cultivation, then maybe for the next meeting, we'll have sample ordinances to start looking at it moving to the next step. But right now, the board isn't sure which direction to go in, so they're just trying to get information.
We didn't want to put work into an ordinance that the town didn't want because the town did vote yes by 181 votes to pass the recreational marijuana act. But so did Chapley.
Right.
But they did, whole moratorium.
Well, something, yes, close.
The other thing I would sort of assume that state law prevailed in regulating any of these facilities. And then certainly that the law just has a state.
Yes. There's five different licenses. Retail, cultivation, production, social, and testing. So, it's five different options to deal with this.
I'm Susan Mann. From what I understand, the state has tabled the social clubs of 2019.
I think I just read that.
Yes, I just read it too.
So, with that in mind, it's really a non-issue. So, my thing would be to discuss growing facilities, individual growing, and that's production, from what I understand, is like the edibles and... I'm not really sure. I'm not the expert here. And then retail. So, I think the social club right now is really kind of a non-issue because the state has yet to establish one of them. And then we always have to follow whatever the state recommends. And if it were to happen in Acton, what do you think you would be collecting for tax? So, would you also be collecting a license fee?
We would collect a license fee.
Okay.
I think there's guidelines for that.
And that would all be part of the ordinance.
Right, right. So, I mean, I think those are more appropriate questions. I would like to see this go to a vote to the people.
So, it happens.
And by just trying to decide a few or two weeks, I would like to see it as an actual vote for the people. And we could, I don't think we should even put a social club on it because it's really a non-issue.
But it will be. I mean, it doesn't hurt to get the information. If you say it listed early and you're going to go through the process of a moratorium or ordinance anyways, and you know that your town is against it, why not just put it in there?
I'm not sure, because, again, I'm not really a tax lawyer on this, but from what I understand, I think the state in Nevada, some other state, went into the issue of buying the marijuana and not being able to carry it, or something silly like that. And so, they came up with the idea of the social clubs. So, I don't know if it's even an issue here in the state of Maine. And maybe that's something that we should also try to figure out. But I'm making a decision in time.
Just to inform some people and all that, but recreational, social clubs, I can't see that. If you go to a bar now, you can have one, two beers, maybe three or four beers, and soon you'll be sober. And what I gather, if you smoke one joint, you're going to be under the influence. You're going to be high. Again, when you do a social club after you've had one or two joints, you're sitting, you're unwind, or you're sober up. Medical-wise, I know Nass mentioned about retail. I don't know if you consider medical dispensaries retail, but there's a lot of people in the town that could use it. I know five people using it now, whether it be for cancer. It was great, we had a family here who still had seizures and couldn't get marijuana. They moved to Colorado, but they did penetrate marijuana and they controlled the seizure. There's a lot of good in marijuana derivatives and that's what they're doing. Most of the medical marijuana doesn't have THC. Now, THC is what gives you the buzz off. They have plants now that don't even have it in the plant. And they make CBD out of it. And CBD doesn't get too high, and it's good for all types of ailments. Plus, there's other derivatives they get out of the marijuana plant. But I could see a medical facility issuing stuff more than a social club or something like that. But that's about it. So, just to hand that aside.
Thank you.
First would be, is the town testing employees and contractors for drug use anywhere we're calling that? From the sheriff's perspective, obviously, that's going to have some implications for the town. Second question would be, if you were to be the ordinance for the town where you're offering approval of this, which I'm not interested in, I would ask that you include what the tax revenues would likely be at best versus, to Richard's point, what's the enforcement cost going to be? I'd be surprised if licensing fees would ever rise to the level of enforcement fees, especially for the only town in the area and support a border town in New Hampshire, who runs some real issues. And I wouldn't want to see the town having legal fees as a result of our location. So, you know, I think the state has longer to go on this. Their tax right now will not cover enforcement. They're only looking at 10% where it's in Colorado, it's only 20% to 25% in Maine. So, I just want to make sure that we think this through and, you know, I'm happy if people can grow themselves and use it for recreation, but that's fine, whatever. I don't think they're fed it yet. So, Colorado, you already threw a first comment at it as well. So, I just want to be careful and make sure that people are well informed about what we're talking about. My preference would be my question.
Please, can I answer this question?
Yes.
So, in regards to the drug testing, we're required by federal law to test anybody that drives for CDL. So, we are currently doing that regardless of what happens. That law stays in place and nothing changes. There's the same drug rules in place.
Any other comments or concerns? I'm sure that your concern is also an owner's concern. Is it? Okay.
I'm prepared to ask, but they wanted me two minutes.
Well, you can start on, touch on if they...
I'm Gina Collet, woman I am. I'm in my 60s, I'm like old Clinton, I didn't do that. So, I'm pretty familiar with the impact. And my mother died of Parkinson's disease, and I have a niece that has Alzheimer's. So, I understand your medical marijuana, and I'm clearly not opposed to that. What bothers me is Leavenly last week had a medical marijuana festival, which was essentially an opportunity to get high. And they had people from New Hampshire come over, and way after leaving, a young man from New Hampshire gets killed in a automobile accident. And I don't really think that's what we want to have happen in this region. And I guess I'm really a libertarian of that sort. If you want to do it at home, it's fine, you can't suppose it. This is an ideal thing to take to the public. And they have a website, which is pretty interesting, because I'll set them to play.
You've got another whole minute.
I'm sorry?
You've got another whole minute.
No. There are over 3,000 licensed caregivers in the state, which is fine. The list is confidential, so we don't know if there's one or a hundred in Acton. And licensed caregivers are going to be given first dibs on retail licenses. So, it would be nice to know what the scope of the issue is before anybody starts issuing licenses. You really don't know.
So, they're confidential to the state? Because don't they have to get a license?
The state does not release remains of the caregivers. So, we don't really know what the scope of the issue is in the confidential. And caregivers will be the first to receive licenses, quote unquote.
So, caregivers, wouldn't they have to get permit fees to...
They already do.
We have a good idea of how many that are in Acton, I think, like that information.
I'm potential investors in this industry. They are actually looking to get rid of the county, and there's going to be a preference as long as you can come up with a fee to pay for the size of facility you want and that you have any school to look. That's all you're going to need. So, caregivers are not going to get the first preference. It's going to be anybody who can come up with that. It is a great business opportunity for the caregivers who are currently in the town. If they want to make that jump from medical to recreational, it's a wonderful opportunity. If you get a ban placed, then that opportunity goes away. So, and a lot of people are looking at this, wondering what's going to happen, but you also need to consider that it's a wonderful economic development opportunity for small towns. It is very tight down here. A lot of communities are doing dance moratoriums. The further north you go, which they actually don't even know on this, you're going to see little smaller towns that aren't willing to look at this in the future. So, you know, there's a lot of good in this industry as well.
Have you been listening to our president? Anybody?
Anyway, I think it's important that the more we hear, the more, the more we have and more information, we have to make our choices.
I'm Andy Mancini, Pedro. I agree with everybody. The retail and the social clubs and that sort of thing is one issue. Another issue is the growing and the production of production issues, making the edibles and what have you. As far as economic opportunity, this is a farming community. Most of the farmers in town here are struggling. And this is an opportunity for farmers in town to have another crop, to grow. And we believe, and, you know, everybody has to remember that marijuana is legal in the state of Maine. And that issue has already been dealt with. As far as people coming to town with valid business plans to buy land and develop the land, increasing tax base in that sense. So, I just want everybody to think about, without the retail and all that, it is a really good opportunity for growing and for farming community in town. Thank you.
Paul Pointe, this is more of a... So, I voted for in favor of legalization at the time. My thought was to essentially decriminalize, you know, the casual use, the waste of resources to throwing those folks in prison or prosecuting or whatever. Where I think I have a concern is, my eyes have been opened a little bit about the, you know, the five and six ways of licensing. I think I'd be concerned about anything that the Town of Acton permits that would cause folks that would not normally be in Acton to come to Acton for whatever. So, for instance, social club, retail sales, any of those things that would sort of ramp up our traffic rate in Acton, you know, with a small town, you don't have lots of resources to deal with, lots of traffic and anything consequent to that. So, I think I'd be concerned about that. On the other hand, something along the lines of growing specifically for medical marijuana, I think is quite possibly a decent, a decent economic opportunity for the town. My concern there, however, is like, you know, follow the money. Where's, if you have a cash crop of marijuana, regardless of whether anybody stays on site or not, or has guards or whatever, somebody's going to try to probably do something with that marijuana, you know, when they're not entitled to do so, and there's going to be some issues. And again, you know, we have a halftime police officer in town right now. So, I'd be against anything, I think, that would require us to ramp up our facilities to deal with.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ray Lopez from Bubble Road. You say this is an informative meeting, and I think that a lot of people in Acton here come over here and they look to the leadership to inform us on things that have already gone, have been happening. One of the best examples to, that came up was Colorado. I mean, they had it for quite some time. There were a lot of issues that have come up on that. Most of that is funded cash, I believe, if someone has taken. So, how do you collect revenue from that? Or how do you know exactly how much is going out in that aspect? So, I think that really what we're looking for, actually, maybe at the next meeting, is if you guys will present what the problems were in places that have already established the recreational use of marijuana, present that to the public so that we can make a more better decision of which way we should go. There is going to be more problems. Some of the concerns that are here as far as traffic, people driving, falling into the influence, that type of situation, not having a full-time police force, people growing it, people coming in to steal some of that growth. But you've got to look at all the aspects of it. You know, and I think with that type of thing is what we as citizens are hoping that you guys can provide to us. All right?
Thank you.
This whole marijuana thing has kind of, you know, I think I've absorbed it now to the point where a lot of the town, I think, the state has accepted it. And it's obviously underran into the rest of the states and all that. I think what we've got to do is we've got to sit back and look at, well, for people, okay? We have all these other towns surrounding us. They're all in a moratorium for a reason. Of course, if we set ourselves up not to have one, it's going to be, it's going to be influx of everybody coming after for that reason. Not saying it shouldn't be one, I'm just saying we don't want to be the dumping ground where everybody comes here just for that reason. Unfortunately, well, unfortunately, whatever, there's already a bunch of rules here in Acton. And one issue that I'm having, we've got one right up the street from us. Had an idea, didn't know, certainly. It would have probably been nicer if the neighborhood didn't know. I do think that's something there that, you know, there's a bunch of kids in the area, a bunch of teenagers, you know, that I believe, you know, if we're going to go ahead and let this happen, we have to have some guidelines. I don't want to hold it on the ground, but the town of Acton has guidelines, okay? I've got to say so many feet on property lines, I've got to do this, I've got to do that. I have a rental unit, and I got a phone call that their house smells like marijuana, okay? Because I guess when they blew them out, I'm not an expert, but I guess when they blew them out, they smell pretty bad. They left all their windows and opened their house, and they come home, and I, my suspicions were correct, and I spoke to the individual. You know, I told him to, you know, I'm only a big scrubber and all that, you know. I guess the point that I did to is, before we let this massive flow of growth come into town without having any regulations, we ought to have some sort of moratorium, at least have a place so we can at least set some policies and go abuse and stuff, at least regulate it.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't know.
Yes.
I understand. I just want to say that it shouldn't be my responsibility, if there is a farm and somebody wants to do this and grow their crop, and you think there might be people coming in to steal, well, just like with my business, I put cameras around, you could put, you know, fencing, you know, with barbed wire, I don't care. But that's your job to keep your thing safe from criminals, okay? The other thing is, if the car camp goes up, we can have dumping guns in town.
I pretty much agree with everything that everybody else has said against it. I worry about the effect that it kind of brings to Acton. They need monitoring. I don't want to ruin Acton for my children. It's just a nice, small, nice community where, you know, we see everybody, I can't know them high. I trust everybody, you know, that our kids go to school with. I don't want to bring people, criminals into the town. We look at other towns that do have it, and people that don't have it, and we respect people. Bye again.
Hi, I'm John, and also from Boston, D.C. I'd like to point out that marijuana is so classified as a scare to the neighborhood right now. So, it is hard to, as the town, do any assessment of the position of this.
You've been really into the... State?
Speak up.
State has already...
Well, the state, they don't have the power to rule on travel legislation by violation or any other... It's only by the ancient history that the state members are going to Colorado to bust our whole dispenser. What position is that of the town?
You've not been to that.
State's right.
On this? I just wanted to just point out to you, which is that the amount of marijuana within the state of Maine passing the Acton to access the 1980s, and it's been the number one state in the United States in medicinal marijuana for the last ten years. It has wonderful laws already in place, how many pools of growth for each person, so forth and so forth. So, there are laws that are in place. There are also laws in place for recreational. And within those laws, if you're renting property, you're not supposed to grow. All of the logical things that should be in a law are there to protect us, but with the recreational piece, it's a whole different story. And I think that everybody's looking at getting out of the economic issues that we are in with marijuana. And it makes logical sense to do that, but we see what alcohol has done. I don't think that, I need to say, hey, you know, math, is that, I'm in favor of medicinal marijuana, 100%, but recreational piece, I think clouds medicinal aspect. I just made a comment to someone that when everybody does it recreational, they don't learn what they can get from it medicinally, if you get. And it's like smoking cigarettes, if you could get fuel from that, you'd have to get cigarettes, just like marijuana. If you don't know that and you're just going in to have a good party, you're never going to learn what you need to learn to fuel yourself with marijuana.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Christine Farari, going on in Acton. Stayed a little bit, that's where we're at, we're going to be a little bit now. I'm not sure if I'm for a social club, not sure if that's right for Acton, but growing might be an economical goal for us. I think we need to look at it, and that's my map.
Thank you.
Great Martinez, what on earth? Just, this calls to my, I'm former law enforcement, and for many years, very much anti-marijuana.
However, over the course of my life and in the business I'm in, I watched the damage that alcohol does to families, to, in all walks of life, it touches everybody. I know a lot of people that use marijuana and they're not all riffraff. There are a lot of outstanding citizens in the productive, and I don't know of any crimes being committed that are fueled by marijuana. It has a lot of benefits and as someone said earlier, there are a lot of folks that are, you know, dealing with medical issues that do use marijuana and it does help them a great deal. Recreationally speaking, my only concern is that if you are smoking marijuana, there is no roadside test that can be done currently, as far as I know, to make a determination as to whether somebody's impaired or not and shouldn't drive it, as is with alcohol. Alcohol, obviously, everybody knows the test there. But this is kind of like prohibition many years ago when everybody was against social clubs and drinking. Boy, I tell you, there's more breweries propping up and more distilleries propping up all over the state of Maine. And it does for our economic growth. I just don't see marijuana as creating as much harm as has the liquor, beer, and alcohol industry. Right down to the family, you know, it doesn't affect folks' lives. I have not had good experiences personally when alcohol, you know, being law enforcement, even in my own family. Marijuana does a lot of good for a lot of people from, of all ages. And as far as economic opportunity, there is an economic opportunity here for the town and for the whole area. Obviously, you only hear about the negative, but there's a lot of positive that goes with it. And just, you know, just kind of think back when alcohol was a issue. And now alcohol is everywhere.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
No, fuck on the way.
So other people have brought this up with me as well. Because it isn't, it is illegal federally. You cannot deposit the cash made from growing, selling, socializing into a bank, a federal bank. How do these companies, do their accounting?
Credit unions.
State.
State charges.
State credit union. And the accountants are already not marijuana, but that.
The federal government will catch up. If this money, you know, to be tracked, they know this money may be used for marijuana headaches. And it's going to be a little.
They're going to have to say something.
Did everybody get a survey?
No.
No.
Before you leave, make sure you get a survey. We'll be like the town hall after another two weeks after the meeting.
Do you have a question for your use of recreation, recreational marijuana in town?
Please speak up.
I have no idea what you mean by that yet. And also the use of recreation or marijuana in Acton, its use is all that we do. I want to use it.
Um, is that maybe there, because not everybody, we didn't get out to vote on that voting day in November, which is also theirs. It could just be a redundant question, just to be sure.
What's recreational, what's medicinal?
That's not what I'm talking about, medicinal. What's recreational, what's medicinal? I don't understand how we support it of the.
We want to know your opinion. Do you agree with people smoking marijuana recreationally on the floor? You know, just to get high, yes or no, maybe, maybe not, or the next one is just. You could be against people smoking it recreationally, but still be okay with it, using it medicinally. There's a big difference in the use.
Oh, yes, because it's already a big one.
Right, it doesn't mean that the town can't put an ordinance or a moratorium in place blocking it. Like Sanford. It's like Sanford doesn't, you realize there's fireworks, but, I mean, they sell in Sanford, but it's getting like.
Not the whole, but you could in, in public.
Yes.
In public, in public?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so the law says they can block it.
We can't hear you.
Speak up.
Would you please give a, an answer as well as could be given by Richard Nass this evening on the fiscal impact of this, i.e. how we're going to levy taxes on this? And or can Nass be developed, and the answer to that question be developed by Nass?
It's all the less.
Susan, I agree with that gentleman about the alcohol in three places in town. Yeah, three places in town that sell alcohol. One also sells cigarettes, which I also think is a part of the problem. We need to realize that marijuana is legal, you know, we have to try to move into the next phase and do it logically. And I don't know about the retail, I don't know if I'm a fan of it or not, but definitely the growing and the production could be a great opportunity for the town to bring in larger tax base and employment. And one thing we've seen, these jobs are actually good jobs.
One time the podium, but we do have, we do have more friends, we certainly want to agree with his opinion. Questions?
Those that should have, I'm not a poor audience here, but I've seen folks who have started. You guys typically have Colorado, Colorado, I have friends in Colorado. They said before this happened, they got their broke and stuff, they had, they had nothing. They were getting ready to move out and find someplace else to go. There's no revenue, no jobs, no nothing. So that's all this is blossoming, there are windows in Colorado, it's coming to a f- there's more jobs, more opportunities, more things to make. This family that I was there, since I remember, I just couldn't move out there. We see the state telling that, probably the family having a die because of the old office. They said, because of the, because of the, the shutters. So, I mean, you can't pick on one or the other. Some people will say, no, it won't work, they'll keep pushing out, what's your opinion? I've seen most sides, and I'm not saying yes, no, I did vote for it, not much, you know, that, but all of it. But the thing is, is that it's a group stuff. We all have to look at it as a group. Not just one individual saying, but it's going to work for us, or one is going to be successful. I've seen a lot of good results on the medical side of marijuana. We've seen good results on homegrown, because it doesn't have a lot of traffic, like they keep saying. Because homegrown environment, people take care of themselves, they make sure some of this stuff is in it. Because they're a woman, they're a woman, they just want to be around this decision of feeling.
So planning next week, in two weeks, will it continue to hand it out to people that they command?
Yes, the surveys will continue to be available at the town mall. People can pick one up if they didn't get to make it here tonight. Bob, did you have one last question?
Just a comment I found out with somebody the other day. They said the town in charge, for anybody involved, involved with marijuana, they can charge up to 3%, some of the towns are charging for anybody involved with it. I don't know if we can do that too, just strictly for marijuana, medical stuff. So that would be an incoming, you can charge 3%. Come with him, okay?
This young lady already spoke once, but she might give us a hint.
Can I just clarify, um, please, yeah. So right now, they are supporting a public hearing on September 26th. And they have proposed some changes, one is getting rid of that county, so anybody who pays can, can get their license. And the other one was they are looking to allow communities that support marijuana businesses to be part of a pool where they collect a 5% tax and they distribute it among those communities. I'm not sure if it's based on, like, if you had a pubgation facility or a retail store in town that you got 5% of whatever that those businesses did, or if it's all in one pool where you would be getting, I don't know, part of the demand, where you would be getting some of their revenues. I don't know how they will disperse that, but they are, before, it had nothing for the towns to benefit at all through taxation, and they're realizing that a lot of towns are not opening for business because of that, because of the, you know, they perceive that they need increased security, police force, things like that. So that is something that they are looking to implement, and it was discussed 5% on the cultivation side and 5% on the medical side. And that could change because they are still developing laws, but that's just like.
I know we're having double people at the podium, but I thought we have more questions and concerns within the hour, so I don't mind having a second round if you have another comment.
I just wanted to ask, currently, who are they, when you said they?
The state. Okay. It's the, there's a committee that's working on this law only, and they've, they've made some revisions.
What's the name of the committee?
I don't remember. I know that they are having a public hearing on September 26th.
So can you just clarify, the public hearing is where?
It's in Augusta.
In Augusta, on September 26th.
I believe it's a Tuesday, 26th, but I could be wrong.
Brendan Ian, another consideration is the state is going to have a infall, and they're going to be, have revenue sharing. And the towns who walk out of all of these issues are not going to get any revenue sharing.
Greg Brunette, my son was nine years old, he had cancer. He went through 15 months of chemotherapy. I knew of other people at the time that were taking marijuana. The doctor would tell them to give their wife marijuana, and I've seen it help a lot of people. I've had cancer twice, thank God, I've never had to have chemo, radiation work, and operation work. But if I did need chemo, I would hope that I would be able to get.
So after the referendum passed, so that's a special in January, set up a joint select committee on marijuana, agreed on marijuana. That committee's been working. There is some indications that they are going to propose 20% tax, which is the last year of marijuana, with half of it, 10% could be available to the towns that raise. So if you're in a social club and if you have a retail facility, you would be raising the money, you would be eligible for that. Now, whatever comes out as a result of the hearing of the 26th, we don't know, we need to decode yet, is going to be a change in the law, which the legislature is going to have to pass. And the governor's going to have to sign. So this is not anywhere near a closed deal at this point. I will tell you that as a tax policy, having towns able to collect sales tax is a huge change. Separated completely from the marijuana issue. Because in Maine, for years and years, the community gets to keep all of the property tax revenue, the state gets income in sales tax. So just as a tax issue, having the towns able to collect any sales tax on anything is a major change. Portland obviously has been wanting to do this for years. And the other bigger cities also. It has not ever passed the legislature. So this, as tax policy, this is a big, if in fact this comes to pass, this is going to be a big change.
Mr. Canyon, do you want to add something?
I was just curious, what, I think Mrs. Nass has said about, she was speculating about what legislation could be, or.
If you want to commit to fill out these surveys, we'll start collecting.